Okay, good evening. It is July 15th, 2020, 7:02 PM. And I hereby call to order this meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you all please rise and join me in parting allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Clerk Bruno, a schedule of upcoming events. Clerk's report.
Clerk's report, okay. Well, I have, I have, um, clerk remind them. But the typical report, two payrolls were processed. 530 trash tags were sold. Deputy clerk has begun planning, holding, um, planning a going meetings theater in the building. But she does continue to work remotely at the home park. Village Hall is now open Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 10 AM to 4 PM. Yard Sale Day has been canceled, as well as the village sponsored summer park program. Couple of other things, temporary firehouse structures that they announced and removed, as many have probably seen. This rule does free up parking. But which importantly, it does mean that our fire department has to go through that home, if you will. It's nice being back in fire, with the base of their, of their own, same floors, which is like that. So regarding the elections and resolutions, the residents that really need to be in there, if the date change along with the minutes first, and the date change of the election, will be held Tuesday, September 15th.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees in our binders, we have a May 13th workshop transcription, a May 20th meeting transcription, June 17 minutes, June 24th special meeting minutes, July 8th workshop minutes. And that's a lot, so just take a moment.
Move the approval of the minutes.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just to say that this has been a lot of compliance with the open meetings law during COVID and when we were doing our entirely remote meetings. I want to thank clerk for keeping up with the transcriptions, particularly in the long village board meeting, or it's not an easy thing to do, and the minutes as well. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to treasurer's report. We are in the second month of the fiscal year. Out of the general fund, $69,114.60 was spent this month. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Move.
That was deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
That's trustee Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Cole. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bills will be paid.
Joel, will there be, the treasurer's report is sometimes challenging to read because there are so many to's and fro's related to the fire department restoration. Will we go through modification where we can actually look at what the normal expenditures are later on?
Yeah, we could. You know, maybe you and I should sort of pull that out. So you're asking about seeing everything related to the fire burn, fire, you know, house reconstruction pulled out, so we see what's exceptional and what's standard?
So we would see that the, that part of that, of the engineer's efforts, that they're not covered, and what was covered.
And some, some of these treasurer's reports this year have had some very large amounts moving through them. And how much of that was actually insurance money? Because if you didn't, if you didn't pull that out and show that, it might sound like we were spending profitably.
The, the budget line from the, which was the insurance line, that's very simple to just run your report from the very beginning. And it will give you the date who it led to.
Yeah, because we did set up its own insurance line, where all those insurance payments went through that line, so that would be a good way to do it, yeah.
Right. But then the, the costs from engineering that were not covered, obviously, and it's like, yeah.
Which, which Joel just talked to us about in the workshop, that that'll become hard visible.
Yeah.
Because she sent, done it, sent the, um...
Yeah, that's all that stuff, yeah. So, thank you. Do not believe we have a zoning report. Is that correct?
It's correct. But that doesn't mean our zoning officer hasn't been busy.
He's actually been very busy, because I've been, I've been working with him on a number of things. But let's, let's make sure we, I think we have to get caught up on a few reports. So maybe you can assist me, trustee Azrati. And also, I was reminded by the supervisor that our building department needs to be sending all building permits to the assessor's office so they can keep up with what changes are happening here.
Okay.
And so that's another thing we need to work with Mr. Fenton on making sure that's happening every month.
Like a new modular on six, seven, or?
Yeah.
Have it?
That the assessor can't do their job if they don't know what's happening. And Tivoli is not the only municipality in Tivoli, tinkle that for that. Don't forget to catch up. There's one other one that I don't need to name. Okay, we'll move into regular business. We have two resolutions related to our twice postponed and upcoming village elections, originally set for March, then for April?
March, June, and then there was a June.
Maybe it stopped in June, so maybe it's been three times, yeah. Are currently scheduled for September 15th. And our two resolutions are to authorize the election inspectors and authorizing the location. So let's see. All right, so I'll take these in order. Do you want me to take these in order of the agenda, or in order in the binder of the, I think I'm right. Sorry. Let's start with appointing election inspectors.
So moved.
We are going to have Judy Scott again and Mark Savino, who is new to this, for Tivoli, right? These dedicated civically minded folks are doing this for $10 an hour. They must be compensated for their work. There's an alternate who is Jackie Zapco. We've had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Will it be candid at this one?
Not unless you bring it to candy, I think, is for the, it's not for village elections. It's to, you know, realign with national, I believe.
But it's not like Judy, nobody can.
Excuse me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a reminder to the public, the candidates that are running in this election are running for the village board.
Yes, that is in the resolution we're about to do. This is establishing election day and the location. So this resolution says that it will be Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, at the newly reconstructed and incredibly beautiful Tivoli Firehouse. Because of course, back in March, when this election was originally supposed to happen, they were going to be up here. We didn't have a fire accessible to us, but we do. And they will take place between noon and 9 PM. And also, the election will be held to elect two trustees for a term of two years, and the village justice for a term of four years. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution establishing election day?
So moved.
Okay. Sorry, couldn't hear unless I was able to hear you. Trustee Schneider, seconded by trustee Cole. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, August 19th, at 7 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6 PM. As of today, and of course, the world is changing every day. As of today, that will be here at the last twice revolved event of the month for now. Who can say? So pay attention. If there's a change, we'll let you know. Proceed, regular workshop on August 12th at 7 PM. We're going to move into trustee reports. Trustee Azrati, if there's anything you want to...
Yeah, there are a couple of things. So one is that in that August meeting, we will be considering a resolution which modifies the point system for the LoSAP program. This was recommended by the governor, or actually passed by the governor as an option that local municipalities who sponsor fire companies could pass. The length of, the LoSAP program is shorthand for length of service award program. It enables municipalities to give up to a specified amount, particularly that's $500 a year, which is invested, in our case, with the RBC wealth management, and then becomes eligible for a payoff to the firefighter at the age of 65. So it is not compensation, it is not a pension, it is an award for service given. That award, and when you get that award, you have to earn a certain number of points. And those points include things like training programs and attending fire incidents, and attending emergency incidents, and attending board meetings. In this period of the pandemic, many of those activities have been canceled. So it made it difficult, if not impossible, for any firefighter to reach the magical 50 points. So according to this new statute, which we'll review at the next meeting, each firefighter will be awarded five points for a given month in which they could not have earned any points. So that's, that's the mitigating process because they're still there for us, and they're still attending traffic accidents and fires and doing all of those things. But they can't do the usual training programs and meetings, et cetera.
Great. Well, it's great that there's something worked out to fill in what's being, you know, missed by the...
So that's one of the things that I wanted to talk about. A second thing is that I have three volunteers now for a committee which will consider improving the process by which we dispose of solid waste in Tivoli. These are people who are highly motivated to reduce our carbon footprint, to build on the strength of our recycling program, and perhaps expand it. Present, they include Phyllis Palmer, John Corcoran, and myself. And we have another person in mind, who I haven't actually consulted with yet. And I would like to find somebody who's perhaps in the environmental science program at our neighboring educational institute and see if we might engage them in that. So I'll be talking to Erin Canaan about that possibility. And then, thirdly, we had a listening panel a few weeks ago, which was, in which there were 70 people. And about a third of that number actually participated and talked about things. And the board is still working very hard at finding ways to respond to and recognize some of the issues that were brought up. But I would caution everybody in the village that Facebook is not an accurate raccomteur of what the village board has actually decided to do. That the village board is governed by municipal law, that the process by which we makes decisions requires public discussion of them, public presentation, it has to be noticed in the newspaper. And it's a deliberately slow process. So that we have the temps to hear all comments from people. So if there is a rumor out there that you should change your behavior because things changed at the legal level, that's exactly what it is, a rumor. If you have been made aware of issues you may not have been aware of as a result of that, and make a personal decision to go about it differently, that's up to you. But there have been no changes in laws, no change in police coverage, no change in the fact that if you see an infraction of the law, you should feel free to go to the police. That's what their job is, is to enforce the law.
Thank you, trustee Azrati. Trustee Schneider?
Okay, so the Village of Tivoli justice report, excuse me, justice court report, for the month of June, total charges received were three, and charges disposed were five. A total of $415 in fines and $269 in surcharges were collected and remitted to the state comptroller. I do want to take a minute and just give you a breakdown of the types of charges that were processed in the court in June. So you have an idea of the type of incidents that are occurring that are being processed. So two of those incidents were speeding, two were overnight parking or no overnight parking, and one was a lack of an inspection certificate on a vehicle. So there you go. That's the month of June.
Further interesting to note on those speeding tickets in our report, it says the mileage, 45 and a 25 gets you 175 bucks. 46 and 30. So those speeds are way over the limit. So stop doing that, please. Thank you, trustee Schneider. Trustee Cole?
Nothing to report at this time. Our zoning review committee is, is on hold, given the current situation. So we will let you know when that can resume meeting. But at this point, that's on hold. So I would just ask everyone, you know, my, my pet peeve, pun intended, if you are out walking your dog, please, we love our pets in the Village of Tivoli, but please pick up after your pets, even in a pandemic, especially in a pandemic. Please remember to pick up. We would all greatly appreciate that. We love seeing our residents walk our dogs out there, but let's be considerate of all of our other residents. That's all.
Great. Is there anything else you wanted to add on the listening session at this time?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say a big thank you to everyone who participated in the listening session a few weeks ago. As trustee Azrati said, we are working through all of the information that we heard very diligently. As a board, we are having special meetings and really looking at what we heard. It's an ongoing process, and that process has started. So I simply want to thank everyone who took the time on a Saturday to log on, make comments, listen in. We appreciate your participation very much.
Thank you, trustee Cole. Deputy Mayor Major?
Well, as always, Tivoli Free Library, you cannot keep them down. They're open again, and, and also having online content. So support your local library because they are awesome. Anybody who's been out in the bays may have seen some exciting changes out there. The Empire State Trail now goes through the bays. So the culverts down in the hollow there between Bard and the commune launch, over the years, they've been replaced with larger and larger pipes because the beavers have become more and more industrious. And now there are these giant, like, concrete tunnels. It's really cool. So there's just, the road has improved. You can bike through there now without being pitched off into the ditch. And the poison ivy is, is...
Flourishing.
And the ticks are, are out as well. The owls have been a particularly good voice of an evening. So I recommend a stroll with that, you know, a stroll in the gloaming to, to check that out.
I believe there's an abundance of chipmunks down there, too.
Big chipmunk here.
Yes.
Because I think someone who's known to all of us has actually been contributing to chipmunks.
Well, I think too that the, you know, there is definitely a correlation between lots of chipmunks, lots of owls.
Ah, yes, yes.
Thank you, deputy deputy mayor. As the clerk said, I'll just repeat, all of these things are the results of the pandemic and an effort by this board on behalf of everyone in this community to promote the public health. Yard Sale Day has been canceled for this year. Additionally, we discourage people from having yard sales. It attracts crowds, and people like to touch the merchandise. And so we just want to ask you to maybe think about saving it to a later time. Similarly, something very dear to my heart, and I know the board, Tivoli Children's Summer Racquet Camp had to be called off for this year. So, and while we're on roll, that is also going to include Tivoli Community Day. So sad, but necessary, all those things. And lastly, August's annual cleanup day is also being impacted. I thought initially this was the one thing that COVID can't disrupt, but it has. The company we usually use to provide that curbside service in this very successful event over the last two years, they, for the safety of their personnel, are no longer doing picking curb, you know, picking up curbside piles. And so our committee, cleanup day committee, has decided that that will be postponed for the time being. If the opportunity to provide that event appears, we will jump on it and let you know. We know that's been popular, but for now, it is postponed for the time being. Touching on what has been said already, the June 27th listening session, I think was tremendously important. Definitely want to thank everyone who participated, everyone who called in, and particularly the people who spoke. Definitely want to thank the Dutchess County Commission on Human Rights and our moderators, who are outstanding. And again, government is not an agile institution, and that's a good thing. I know it can be very frustrating, that it seems like action should happen and boom. My belief is, the reason it is set up to be slow and deliberate is so that if a government is doing something really bad, there's lots of time to get in the way from the citizenry. This is, in this republic, it's about not having a tyrant who can snap their fingers, issue an edict, and change your life. So I understand that it's not agile, that can be frustrating, but there are reasons for that, and they're very important. And this board will proceed to do the hard work that we need to do for the community. And we're grateful to have all your involvement all the time. Related to that, as trustee Azrati said, you know, social media is not where you're going to learn what we are doing, your elected representatives. That is not the place. If you want to know what's happening, attend or view these meetings and communicate with us. A few things that came up that I can rattle off easily. If you want to know the laws of the Village of Tivoli, go to tivoli NY dot O R G. It's the village website. On the first page, halfway down on your left is a link to the village local log and code. It's two clicks, and you will have it all at your fingertips. It is not hard to find, and everyone in the village should, should read it sometime. And you can learn anything about garbage, to grass, to noise, to chickens, to anything else. Also, all of our contact information is there. It's difficult under COVID to sort of have the contacts with our constituents and you with your elected representatives that we normally enjoy here in tiny Tivoli. So don't hesitate to write an email, pick up the phone. I know all of us will make ourselves available. We all, you know, in this period are taking small meetings with a person or two in a, you know, safe manner. But as trustee Azrati said, for the NOTS, there have been no changes in the village code, in village law. And I don't necessarily know what is going on, you know, on social media rumors or whatnot. So know that the, if you have an emergency, you are still, we encourage you to call 911. And if you have a need for your own health and safety, to contact law enforcement. The Village of Tivoli contracts with the Dutchess County Sheriff's deputies, and you should call them for your need at 486-3800. That is still what is done for public safety here in the village. And on the same topic, if you have had an unpleasant, a negative, or God forbid, worse experience with law enforcement, we want to know that. We want to know that. So please, if anything like that, if you have that experience, email us, email me, contact us, tell us, tell us right away. Please tell us all the information you can. Because one thing, I think, if I may speak for all of us, from the listening session, is we take that seriously, and we want to be able to follow up with our own investigation immediately, swiftly, thoroughly. And if we're not informed, that, that is very difficult for us to do. But we are quite committed to doing that. Now, there's going to be a lot more that's going to come forward in time as we work through these issues in our community. But for tonight, I wanted to let you know those things. And I have one other little thing I'm going to spring on you guys, but just before I do that, because it's kind of fun. Anything else from the board on any topic, anything that we haven't discussed tonight? Yes?
I think one thing we just wanted to let the public know is for the upcoming local village election in September, the resolution we passed tonight, if anyone would like to vote absentee, you can get an absentee ballot by contacting our village clerk if you're more comfortable voting that way. So we just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Excellent. Thank you, trustee Cole, for bringing that up. Well, for the last few months, we had to do our board meetings quite differently. I mean, this is still different. And that would have been impossible with the incredible support of Panda, in particular of this individual back there, Danielle Poilie. And I would like to... Thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Panda. You know, having, having you and your services available to a tiny village government has many times proved invaluable in the last few months, even more so. So thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And with that, it's 7:32 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Give it to Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Take good care.